We'll call the meeting to order. We'll open the meeting with invocation by Pastor Terrell Eldredth of the First Southern Baptist Church. Pledge of Allegiance will follow by Darlene Packard.
Let's pray together. Gracious Father, as we gather this afternoon in this wonderful facility in a beautiful city, in the midst of our elected officials and some of their staff, we are reminded that great halls of commerce and finance and even the halls of our vast military are not always safe, they're not always secure. And as we very quickly approach Sunday, 9/11 Patriot Day, Father, we can't help but be reminded, even as the Psalmist David reminds us, that our help only comes from you when he said, "We wait and hope for the Lord, for he is our help and our shield. In him our hearts rejoice, for we trust in his holy name." May your unfailing love rest upon us, oh Lord, even as we put our hope in you. Father, tonight remind us that our hope is in you, that that's where we find the place for our souls to rejoice, for our spirits to soar, and for the help that we need. Father, this evening, we understand that we live in a wonderful country, we live in a wonderful city, we have wonderful freedoms, but those freedoms come with awesome prices. Almost always, at some point, the price of blood. So Father, today, even as many of us maybe have never even given much thought to what happened on 9/11, 2001, maybe not hardly in the last 12 months, we remember those who've remembered every day since that date, who come home missing a husband or a wife, a child, a parent, who have lost firefighters that were relatives, who've lost police, first responders, who are dads and moms. And every day, they're reminded of the great cost. Father, we pray that this weekend, your peace would rest upon their lives in a way that is just supernatural, that you'd give them strength, that you would watch over them. And Father, it's my prayer that you would be with all of us as we remember. I pray that you would be with our city officials, these men and women who are here, the staff that are here. Pray that you would guard their spirits, their souls, their physical well-being, their emotional well-being. Because the attacks don't always come from terrorists. Sometimes they just come from within. Sometimes they come from the great enemy. Father, I pray that you would uphold them in your mighty arm, in the hand of your love. We pray that your grace would rest upon all of us. Father, we pray for wisdom. This evening, we pray that your wisdom would be evident to all, that your will would be accomplished here. For we pray these things in your most precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Darlene. Okay, move on to roll call. Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
President?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
President.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on then to scheduled announcements. Chamber of Commerce. Anybody here for the chamber? No? Okay, we move on into Proclamations. Constitution Week and Healing Fields of Northern Arizona. Diane, do you have the proclamation? We'll start with the Constitution Week.
Yes, we do, Mayor. Constitution Week, September the 17th through the 23rd, whereas September 17th, 2016 marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and where it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas the Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim September the 17th through the 23rd, 2016, to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Thank you, Diane. Your comments?
That's right. Actually, there are some things you probably don't know about the Constitution. It was actually signed on September 17th, 1787. It was not ratified until 1788. The Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to make a Constitution Week. It happened in 1956. There were two Presidents that signed. There were 16 future senators that signed. And we are glad to have the opportunity to have Constitution Week so that we can remind all Americans that they should take a look at all of their rights and responsibilities and be so proud to be an American. You know what the Daughters of the American Revolution are? They are the people who have a lineage that can trace back to a Revolutionary War patriot. We have about 183,000 nationwide. There are 3,000 chapters in the world. Okay, I'll start with the ones I know. This would be Sherri Mesh, Kathy McMur, Debbie Lamb, Dorothy Castanos. I don't know you.
Hi. Well, we're with the Patriot Week. All right. Patty Schaefer, Molly Ho-Right, Heidi Dawn Foster, Jeremiah Tate, and Mary Mallory.
Mary, your comments?
Well, this is just an amazing week. It's just a time when this community really comes out and just speaks America. And we stand together and we stand united, and we're a force as we do stand together. And we should always remember and never forget, from the time this country was brought forth to what we have today, so many before us did a lot of hard work and sacrificed everything. And we today have the responsibility to keep this country the way it was meant to be. So I just thank the community so much for always being there to do these amazing events. And tomorrow morning, we will set the Healing Field up. So if you're not doing anything, 7:00 in the morning, right out here at the grass area in between Town Hall and the Police Department, 3,000 flags. Come and join us.
What you're saying, she'll put you to work. Darlene, you have a comment?
And on Sunday, we have our 9/11 ceremony at 1:00. Please join us. And then at 2:15, we have the Prescott Symphony Pop, which will give us a free concert on the Green. So please come out and join us this weekend and all week long. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? We want to thank you all. Thank the Daughters of the Revolution for their good service. Yours as well. Patriot Week, okay. Thank you so much. The what? Oh, no, that's it. Okay, that's next. Okay, the next one is the Healing Fields. Diane, you have that?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Healing Fields of Northern Arizona, Patriot Week, September the 10th through the 16th, 2016. Whereas from the tragedy of September 11th, 2001, a spirit has arisen, a stronger sense of family, community, brotherhood, and patriotism. And we have come together as Americans. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations, now and forever, and whereas we wish to honor and remember all those who lost their lives and who have demonstrated the ultimate sacrifice for their country, and whereas we wish to honor and pay tribute to the men, women, and families who were affected in our own town, as well as those who worked so diligently to help our people recover. And whereas commencing September the 9th, 2016, with the placement of the flags of the Prescott Valley Healing Fields of Northern Arizona and with the commemoration of the tragic events of September 11th, 2001, we join the entire nation in the recognition of Patriot Day, September the 11th, 2016, to remember and honor the invincible spirit of America and its heroes. Whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11th throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the advancement of patriotism and love of country, and the remembrance of those innocent victims who died September the 11th as heroes, one and all. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim September the 10th through the 16th, 2016, as Patriot Week.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
And by the way, Mary Mallory, who was just re-elected again, was very instrumental in getting the Healing Field started here in Prescott Valley. Your comments, Mary?
Oh, just, it was a community event, and the community came forth, and we put up this great event together. And that's what's so special about it. It was done by the people, all in the northern area, for the people. Those people that were doing nothing wrong but going to work or maybe taking a vacation. And for whatever reason, the evil that is out there is something that we need to be well aware of.
Please come out and walk the field. It's there 24/7 from tomorrow till Friday the 16th, and you will be moved. Thank you.
This Healing Field is going to commemorate basically two things. The 3,000, nearly 3,000 innocent, non-combat people who were killed in a Twin Towers attack, and also the 19 firefighters who lost their lives near Yainel, what, three years ago, I guess? So it's a very special event. It's the, there was an attack on Americans. It's not the first time Americans have been attacked by a foreign entity, but it was a very striking one. We're glad that's behind us. We want to remember those people that were lost. Any other comments? Do you want to take a picture of us? Thank you, Heidi. Okay, the next thing, we'll move on to certificates. Certificate of Appreciation to James Gregory for 20 years of service. Vice Mayor, you coming down?
Thomas, go ahead. I do. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, tonight we gathered to honor Lieutenant James Gregory. He's been here 20 years, but he's really been in law enforcement for over 26 years. He started his law enforcement career with the United States Air Force as a security policeman. He started his civilian law enforcement career with the Phoenix Police Department in 2004 and has been employed with the town of Prescott Valley for the last 20 years. He has extensive supervisory experience in all aspects of law enforcement. He was assigned as our department's Field Training Sergeant for a few years. He was assigned as our K-9 supervisor for two years, and in fact, he started our K-9 program in 2003. James was assigned to the Criminal Investigations Section as its Sergeant for four years, and under his supervision, the Criminal Investigations Unit received Unit of the Year Award in 2005. He was assigned to the Multi-Agency Partners Against Narcotics Trafficking Task Force for six years. And while assigned there, he was responsible for the law enforcement component of the initiative against prescription drug abuse, which has been quite successful. He was also involved in the Synthetic Drug Initiative, which drastically reduced the amount of prescription drugs throughout Yavapai County. And if I'm correct, I think we were one of the first counties to address that issue prior to the state taking action. So good job. And he is currently assigned as the Criminal Investigations Division Commander, working directly for me. Sorry for that. Lieutenant Gregory's been married to his wife Stacy for 23 years. Stacy's a registered nurse at the Prescott VA Hospital. Together, they have two children, daughter Brianna, who's attending F-PY College to be a nurse, and son Tyler, who just entered his sophomore year of high school.
Well, Lieutenant, we're very thankful that we have you with us in this town. And I want to thank you personally for all the years that you've given the town and to appreciate everything that you've done for us. Thank you.
Other comments?
Lieutenant Gregory, once again, 20 years. You know, you're just warming up to the career. Once again, we have an excellent example of someone who lives and works in the community and who gives back every day of his life to protect us and keep us safe. I know I've met Lieutenant Gregory on many different occasions for different reasons. All good. And it's always been a pleasure. He always has a good smile on his face and a good attitude. And, you know, continue the good work that you're doing, and we expect more out of you. So thank you.
Good. Thank you, Marty. Stephen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, or congratulations on your 20 years of service, and thank you for your service to our town. I appreciate it.
Laura?
I'll be good. We are doubly fortunate in having an outstanding police officer. And he serves in many capacities that none of you know anything about. He and I attend various board meetings together of agencies out in the community. But the one thing I want to say to you, James, is every department needs men for the young police officers, especially just coming out of academy to look up to. I count on you to be that person. And you never fail. And the community is blessed each day with our police department and officers like yourself. And I humbly thank your family for allowing you to give so much of yourself to us.
Thank you, Laura. Mike?
Yeah, I wanted to lend my congratulations as well. You're a familiar face, I think, in the police department. I don't think there's a time I don't remember or haven't seen you as part of the command staff. And obviously, you've worked over the years to work up the command staff. And I always say, I think, in terms of years served, that it seems like it was just yesterday. And that all the experience and competency, education that you bring to the job and all the officers do, it's just, it really does blow me away. So I think we have one of the top-notch police departments in this area, if not in the state of Arizona. So congratulations again. You've earned it.
Mary?
Well, as always, appreciate your service, the service you've given to the town for the last 20 years. I look forward to another 20 years. And God bless you and your family as you are always out there taking care of this community.
Want to say something in your defense?
Thank you for all the nice comments, and it's been a really great place to work for the last 20 years. It's really nice working for a community that really supports you. I can't tell you how many times we go out and, you know, citizens, and everybody comes up to you and appreciates our service. And it's really easy to work for a place like that. And we do have the best department in Northern Arizona, and it's a really nice place to work. And I look forward to the next five years working here, at least.
Five.
Vice Mayor? Just five.
Five. I thought I said 20. No.
Hey, we have five years to change his mind.
Leave me out of it.
Okay, Lieutenant, you have a $400 gift that will be included in your next paycheck. We have a town pin with three emeralds to indicate 20 years' service. And we have a plaque that says, "An appreciation to James Gregory for 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the town of Prescott Valley, September 1996 through September 2016." Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. We really do appreciate it. And you're right, we have the best police department in Northern Arizona, probably in the whole world. Thank you so much and congratulations. I think Heidi wants a picture of all of us. Chief? Thank you so much and congratulations again. Okay, next thing is comments? I'm sorry, one more. Certificate of Appreciation to Larry Prentice, 15 years. Where's Larry? I saw him earlier. Here he comes. Yeah, no, come on up.
Come on up.
Who's, is that the family back there? Come on up. There they come.
There you go.
Well, this is just great, huh? Do you have any comments, Diane?
Yes, I'm afraid we do, Mayor.
Who wrote it will know whether it's...
Don't worry, Larry, it's all good. Larry Prentice came to the town 15 years ago, but did not come far away, come from far away, since he was a local, homegrown talent, an alumnus, no less, of Bradshaw Mountain High. Can you hear, "Go Bears"?
Go Bears.
Very often, whenever high school sports are discussed, especially the football team, you would hear, "Go Bears." Larry is also a die-hard Arizona Cardinals football fan, even long before they went to the Super Bowl a few years ago. As for Larry's professional talents, Larry embraced computer technology growth and studied geographic information system technology, or GIS for short, at Northern Arizona University. Go lumberjacks. Larry was one of the first GIS professionals employed at the town and has been promoted through the years to his current position as GIS Division Manager. Larry's effort and dedication has significantly grown the system over the years to the industry-leading GIS database in place today. GIS serves all town departments, not only Public Works and Utilities, where he has his office, but also Community Development, Police Department, Capital Projects, and Parks and Recreation. You can bet any multicolored exhibit from any of these departments has the data input and subsequent easy-to-understand information represented in a product of Larry's GIS talents. The development community and real estate community complement Larry often on the GIS information available via the web and the simple ease to gain the information and the data output. Larry, with the support of his wife Jamie, volunteers for youth sports and activities for his three children, Peyton, Paxton, and Paris, and has grown them up over the years in Prescott Valley to now wondering where to park all the cars for his teenagers. Larry's wife, Jamie, is wonderful in every way and even tolerated for her cheering for Mingus High, where she went to high school. Town departments and residents are very much enriched with the GIS talents of Larry Prentice and his dedication to the Prescott Valley community. Larry, congratulations on your 15 years of service to the town of Prescott Valley.
Larry, did you write that yourself? Jamie, your comments? 20 minutes.
20 minutes? I don't know what to say.
She doesn't know what to say.
I don't know what to say.
Just say, "Thank you."
Thank you?
Any other council got comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, when I first came on the council, all I heard about was GIS. And I know it's something that the employees in the town are very proud of, and I know it's grown over the years. So we appreciate the time and effort you've put in to make it a state-of-the-art, I think, resource for the town. Thank you.
Mary?
Well, I know when it comes to GIS is you were the one that helped mapped out all those dots for the field. So there, that's what I've got going on, GIS.
Stephen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, congratulations on your 15 years. Thank you for your service to the town. We appreciate it.
Laura?
He's the go-to guy. When I wanted to know where all the fire hydrants was, he got the answers. I think you even make some banners and things. Is that correct? Yeah, because we used one of your banners down at the Leaf Townsend Cities on festival night. So the point of these comments is he's a very multi-talented employee, and we are fortunate, fortunate. And we really appreciate you, Larry. Don't feel like ever you're taken for granted because we're constantly asking you to do something. It's because you're so capable and talented.
Thank you, Laura. Marty?
Yeah, Larry is one of those unsung heroes who's got his fingerprint on a lot of the exhibits that you usually see presented in PowerPoint presentations. Because whenever there's a map, Larry's got his fingerprint all over it. So he basically works behind the scenes, but he's very important to the operation of this town and a lot of the presentations that we're able to make. So 15 years. Thank you very much, and keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sure there's not a department in the town that you haven't assisted in one way or another. And I know we do appreciate everything that you do. You don't hear your name a lot each and every day, but when someone needs your help, they certainly know who you are and who to go to. So thank you for all your time, and we do appreciate it. And thank you for allowing him to come to us when we need him. So thank you.
Jamie, you still have 19 and 1/2 minutes.
She's a woman of many words. Anyway, thank you, Mayor and Council, for all your support over the years. It's been a wonderful experience and a great opportunity, and I hope for many more. And specifically, my family, of course, for their support, and my kids. I remember my oldest was two years old when I started here, so it's crazy to think about that. But... But it's been neat and also my, all the town staff that I support and they support me, it's been a great working relationship. And specifically for our Department of Public Works, it's a great family to work with. And those guys make it fun to come every day. So, and Norm always shows my work, so I greatly appreciate it and does a good job with that. So, thank you.
Okay, and we have a couple of things for you too, Larry. We have a $125 gift that'll be in your next check. Probably shouldn't have said that out loud with the whole family here, huh? Okay. And a town pin with two emeralds for the 15 years. And we have a plaque that reads "Appreciation Award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Larry Prentice in appreciation for 15 years of dedicated service, August 2001 through August 2016." Thank you very much. Well, we certainly congratulate you, Larry. Everybody said it, you do a great job. They're very much appreciated. They want your own for another 45 years. Jamie, take good care of him, okay? And now she wants to, Heidi wants to take your picture. Your kid's kind of, including Jamie, over. Go ahead. And thank you again. Congratulations. Next, we have comments, communications from the council. Anybody have any comments?
Mayor, I have some comments.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, so I got two issues that I wanted to talk about that are pretty big to me. I saw an article in the paper the other day, August 26th, with the title "AG's Office Advises PV Town Staff to Study Open Meeting Laws." A field visit by the Prescott Valley Planning and Zoning Commission this past April was subject to a complaint to the Attorney General's Office for violation of the open meeting law. The complaint alleged, first, that there were no minutes written or submitted from the field trip, and secondly, that the commissioners did not hold public meeting during the portion of the trip that took place at the Prescott Golf and Country Club. And then it goes on to say that director, or Community Development Director Richard Parker stated in his affidavit that the AGO, to the AGO, that because he was concerned that several residents known to be strident opponents of the proposed development in the country club might become confrontational if his passengers left the vehicle, and that, I guess, was the reason that they didn't have an open meeting. Further down in the article, it says, "State law requires all meetings of public bodies shall be, shall be, public meetings, and all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberations and proceedings." It also says that a van with PGCC residents followed the town van. At one point, the residents exited their vehicle to wave "No condo" signs, which troubled Parker. His concerns, however, do not excuse compliance with OML, the open meeting law, Munt stated in his letter to the Attorney General. In addition, as of the date of this letter, August 1st, there is no agenda or minutes posted on the commission's website for this meeting, despite such documents being posted for other meetings around the same time. Based on these circumstances, I conclude that the commission violated open meeting law in conducting the field visit. And then there's a comment from Town Manager Larry Tarkowski that says, "It was an oversight of the department's side of things that has been addressed by the Attorney General." It said, "In fact," he added, "that departments with commissions took the refresher training." Now, being on the town council, it bothers me that August 26th is the first time I even heard about this. Our town's being accused of not having open meetings, and I'm on the town council and I don't even hear about it until I see it in the paper. That bothers me. That shows me that there might be a leadership problem in this town that needs to be addressed. Okay. My second thing, I'm gonna beat a dead horse, but I, I did an open records request after the police chief was influencing the elections. And it turns out that three out of the four candidates that got re-elected all won their spots by less than 100 votes. So my theory that him saying this stuff could influence the elections, it very well could have. All it would have taken was less than 100 people to change their minds with what he said. Okay. I'm gonna go over the law again, because the newspaper said, uh, no law was broken, so I'll break it down for you. It says, this is 9-500.14, look it up. It says, "A city or town shall not spend or use its resources, including the use of expenditures of monies, accounts, credits, facilities, vehicles, postage, telecommunications, computer hardware and software, webpages, personnel, equipment, materials, building, or any other things of value of the city or town for the purpose of influencing the outcome of elections. Notwithstanding this section, a city or town may distribute informational pamphlets on a proposed bond election as provided in Section 35-454, if those information pamphlets present factual information in a neutral manner. Nothing in this section precludes a city or town from reporting on official actions of the government body." Section C says, "This section does not prohibit the use of city or town resources, including facilities and equipments for government-sponsored forums or debates if the government sponsor remains impartial and the events are purely informative and provide an equal opportunity to all viewpoints," which didn't happen. "Employees of the city or town shall not use the authority of their positions to influence the vote or political activities of any subordinate employee," which I've gotten information that that might have occurred as well. And further down in the law, it defines what influencing the outcome of elections is. So it says, "Influencing the outcome of elections means supporting or opposing a candidate for nomination or election to the public office or the recall of a public officer or supporting or opposing a ballot measure, question, or proposition, including any bond, budget, or override election, and supporting or opposing circulation of a petition for the recall of a public official or a petition for a ballot measure, question, or proposition in any manner that is not impartial or neutral." Okay, so in that open records request, I found a few more interesting things. On July 26th, he, Police Chief Gerald, wrote a speech, which I have right here, that he was going to recite, I guess, to the communities around the town. And I'll show you why that bothers me in a little while. July 26th, this is long before I even had an issue with anything, because I didn't know this was going on. He had a meeting in Stone Ridge where he spoke about this. And this is what he said, or at least this is what his, uh, his speech said. "While gang activity is relatively low, the problem with drugs is escalating, and it will get much worse if we, if the use of recreational marijuana is legalized." Now, for anybody that doesn't know, there's currently a, a measure on the ballot, it's called Proposition 205, for the legalization of recreational marijuana. So I believe he broke the law there, because he went against that.
Tell them, Steve, no?
Not done yet. He also said, "Some have argued that a tax increase would, should be voted on by the people. Again, this takes time, and it's my belief that we elect a public body to do what is right for the benefit of the entire community." For anybody that doesn't know, there is a local initiative that is going to be on the ballot in November that is going to require the town to send any tax increase to a vote of the public. So he's also speaking out against that local initiative, which is a violation of the law. And he said, "And finally, I've heard that some candidates for council would actually like to repeal the tax increase. I will not comment on their candidacy," but that's what he's doing, "but I would tell you unequivocally that if that happens, I will be forced to immediately lay off 12 employees or more, most of them sworn police officers in Prescott Valley will become less safe overnight." Now, that's fear mongering, and everybody knows it's a lie. Like, it doesn't take a genius to figure that out. Okay? In those emails, I found many other things that show that he has intent to sway the elections. Got it all in black and white. So if, if anybody wants to see it, I'd be more than happy to show it to you. So regarding the first thing, I can't vote on anything that comes from planning and zoning until I'm confident that they're not breaking any more laws. That, I mean, that really bothers me. Those people from the Prescott Country Club have come up here when we've talked about it. They were against us annexing their, their, their land, and never once did any of them get violent. So for anybody to say that they were scared of them, it just, I don't believe it. Okay? Again, I think we, we need to really look at the town leadership, because it's beginning to look like it's a leadership problem here. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, as Stephen was reading some of the information from the newspaper, that when I served in the Air Force Clark Air Base, we had an American who lived in Manila for many years, and every Sunday, he would read the newspaper on the radio. And I'm not sure who the audience was, but I know I enjoyed that quite a bit. And so I appreciate Stephen regenerating what the newspaper has, has put in their, their columns. And I know, I think we all know that none of us are perfect and that we live and learn from our mistakes. And that, you know, as I've mentioned in my letter to the editor, I give a vote of confidence to our Chief of Police. I think he's done a great job. I was at Stone Ridge during his presentation, I thought it was fine. And, you know, I think other municipalities have gone through the process of learning how to better cope with the open meeting law. So we appreciate the guidance that we've received from the state.
Anyone else? If there's no further comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired on a specific item, it will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. It includes the approval of the August 18, 2016 council meeting minutes, approving the routine destruction of records, approving the special event liquor license for Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona for the third annual Wild West Mudfest, to be held on September 17, 2016, at 7501 East Civic Center Circle, Christine, or Kristen Kearns applicant. D is approving the maintenance contract with Niles Radio in an amount of $11,970. E is approving the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition, a proposal to apply for two-year, two-year Yabai County Rural Action Committee grants totaling up to $100,000, and the Arizona Water Protection Fund Grant for up to $200,000 to conduct watershed restoration projects. And approving the purchase of two new vehicles, 2016 Chevrolet Selvato 1500s, in the amount of $23,174.33 per vehicle for community development, and approving accounts payable. Does anybody want to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item F.
Second, anyone?
Which item? I couldn't hear.
F, Foxtrot.
F, I'm sorry. Okay. See what the F is.
It's purchase of two vehicles.
Okay, that's pretending, purchase of two vehicles. Richard, are you here?
Okay. Do you like an explanation?
I think he does.
Go on the, on the consent agenda, then go to that issue.
Okay. Anyone care to make any comments?
Mayor, I will make a motion to vote on the consent agenda but remove item F. Is that correct? Removing item F out of the consent agenda but voting on the rest. I make a motion for that.
Okay. Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with the motion made and seconded, would you set the, call the vote down?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Lee Mayor.
Okay, well, then we move on to item number F. Richard, do you want to make any comments on that?
Sure, we're proposing to buy two new trucks, one for building safety, one for code enforcement to replace aging vehicles. One of the vehicles is a 1989 truck, has in excess of 180,000 miles on it. The other one is a Caprice that we inherited from either a Caprice or a Buick Liberty, I believe it is, that one we bought used, has near 100,000 miles. The other one is a Caprice that we inherited from the admin division that is used for code enforcement. Both of those vehicles, while they have somewhere around 100,000 miles, are continuing to cost us a great deal of money in repairs annually. And we've elected to go out with the state purchasing contract to replace two vehicles. This is the, let's see, I've been here 20 years, this is the, will be the third and fourth new vehicles that we've purchased for community development. The remaining stock has either been returns from the police department or something that we've bought, used typically from one of the automobile dealerships locally.
Good. Any questions, comments?
I do have questions. I mean, we're replacing car, one car at least, and one truck. Why couldn't we just get a car that maybe would save us $5,000, $10,000?
Certainly, we could replace it with a car. We do have another truck that's used in code enforcement. We pick up things along the road like signs and that kind of stuff, and it's very cumbersome, though the Caprice has a very large trunk. We often put them in the trunk of the Caprice, but for ease of removal, a pickup truck is better. In terms of going out for field inspections for building safety, it's unusual to have cars. We have used cop cars in the past, but they typically get stuck, they have low clearance problems, so we can't go to construction sites and easily maneuver those construction sites. So in that instance, buying a car, I think, would be not a good idea. That's the reason why the truck is being proposed.
What about buying a used truck?
We've looked into the cost of buying used automobiles, and our fleet management has suggested to us that we buy new, because we get an advantage through a state bid contract. And by doing state bid, we save a great deal of money. We're buying these things at a considerable discount than, than we would get at any other dealership. And that's because of state bid that is bid annually by different providers. I believe it is a provider in, in Phoenix. We have looked at local purchases. We looked online to see what was available, and we're actually finding that we can buy a used truck, but the used truck costs more than the state bid for a new vehicle.
All right. Any other questions, comments, motions, demotions, commotions, promotions, anybody? Marty? I'm sorry, Mary?
I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, for, I don't know how many years, probably since this town has started to build itself, we have been using mostly used vehicles and used items. And, you know, we have been fixing these things for years. And I think it is about time that we buy new items. And I think it is about time that we buy new items for our town, vehicles and things like that, so that we have up-to-date vehicles to use, to get things around. You know, we're working on 20-year-plus old vehicles, and that costs money, keeping those things up. The same thing with the police department. Their vehicles were very old, and it was time to replace them as well. And, uh, so, we do save money by buying the new vehicles, new products, because we get warranties, and we get a lot of extra things, and just to keep pouring money into a black hole and keep fixing a lot of the stuff. So, this town has done an amazing job with everything, when it comes to the vehicles, the equipment, everything. And I think that what we're doing right now is we're trying to move forward with things that are reliable to take care of a town. That is growing rapidly, and that will continue to grow. So, that's what we are doing here. We are trying to maintain a town for a future, and a bright future, that I believe this town has. And we are doing a very, very good job.
Thank you, Mary. The comments? Marty?
Yeah, as someone who continually is pricing vehicles, trucks, uh, I know that a Chevy Silverado, even a stripped-down version, buying from the dealership, is a minimum of $28,000. So, we are saving that $5,000 and $6,000 that you were looking at. And, uh, it's, it's a reliable vehicle, and as Richard said, there are things more than just driving around that the code enforcement and other people in the community development department needed for. And, uh, when you have to start moving things around, I know, because I do that a lot when I'm doing my work with Habitat. So, you're always throwing things in the back, and it's just so much easier to throw it in there instead of messing up the interior and other items. You know, that's what a, that's what a pickup truck is built for, to, you know, you could abuse it a little bit, and it's still going to stand up and look good and do the job it's supposed to, so.
Thank you, Marty. Other comments? Laura?
Two issues that weren't discussed, but that I'm aware of when I checked into this, is improved mileage and safety, and that's important.
Other comments, motions, promotions? Marty?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept on the consent agenda, item F, to approve the purchase of two new vehicles, a 2016 Chevy Silverado 1500 in the amount of $23,174.33 per vehicle for community development.
Oh, second?
Okay, with the motion and the second, we're going to call a vote on it, Diane?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we'll move on to new business for comment, review, and/or possible action. Number 10A is, uh, public hearing zoning map change, ZMC 15-004, talking glass apartments. Carmen?
And, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, and, uh, now we have an example of Larry Prentice's map on the, uh, screen for everyone's enjoyment. Um, this evening, I have a request by Fane Signature Group, Brad Fane, applicant, for the approval of a zoning map change. Uh, this map, zoning map change is from C2PAD to RSPAD, residential, residential and services planned area development, on approximately 9.44 acres located in the town center entertainment district of Prescott Valley. This property was annexed into the town in 1992, and thereafter, the 70 acres were rezoned from RCU 70 to C2PAD for the purpose of developing a regional commercial center. In 2000, a development agreement was approved between the town and the developers to further the creation of a downtown plan. And this incorporated two parcels, parcel A as a unified entertainment center and parcel B as a unified shopping center. The first and second phases of the, um, of the entertainment center were approved, and this allowed for the development of the, uh, center, as well as a 2,400 square foot mixed-use, uh, retail office building, and an additional 230 parking spaces to support the new building. On January 2nd of 2014, the Town Council and Planning and Zoning Commission held a joint work-study session to discuss a proposed minor amendment to the general plan, to allow for a high-rise residential apartment complex of approximately 214 units on 9.44 acres at the southeast corner of Main Street and Florentine Road. The proposed amendment was from town center plan, mixed-use low intensity, to town center plan residential. At that time, the concept was proposed as a way to bring new energy to the downtown area, since commercial development had stalled with the recession. Also, a recent focus on the development of an allied health center downtown was believed to encourage high-density residential development in the area. The application was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a recommendation of approval was forwarded to the Town Council. The Town Council reviewed the application in September of 2015 and approved general plan amendment 15-002, amending the land use designation of the 9.44 acres. The subject property, um, is located in, in the town center. Um, there's a preliminary plan that supports this zoning map change. Um, the preliminary development plan consists of 14 apartment buildings with 214 units, 393 parking spaces, of which 15 are designated for the handicap in a clubhouse. There will be 16, or six different building types, either two or three stories in height, with a maximum height of 39 feet. The clubhouse amenity features a conference room, leasing area, maintenance room, theater, fitness, multipurpose room, second-floor game room, and rooftop patio. Accessory buildings include remadas, pool area, cabana, pool equipment enclosure, and refuse structures. A dog park will be provided in the center of the complex. The proposed development will have ingress and egress on North Main Street and a write-out only for tenants on North Lake Valley Road, with additional emergency access only on North, uh, Lake Valley, uh, Road. Parking will be provided both onsite and the, in the adjacent parking area, approved through FDP 01-018 for the entertainment center phase two. The phase two parking has an overflow and therefore will provide an additional 110 spaces to be used for the required parking in the parking complex. The proposed use and proposed RSPAD zoning is appropriate at this location and is in conformance with the general plan 2025. A traffic impact statement was prepared by Practical Traffic, uh, by the, uh, request of the town of Prescott Valley, and this was done to analyze traffic impacts relating to the subject development proposal. Potential changes to the adjacent roadways will be addressed in the final development plan upon the recommendation of the town engineer. A neighborhood meeting was held in July of 2015 by the applicant, um, with all the adjacent, uh, landowners within 1,000 feet, um, invited by first-class mail. The meeting was attended by five people, two representing the applicants and three members of the community. The community representatives all voiced their support for this project. They saw the potential benefit of having residential within walking distance of the entertainment center, grocery stores, banks, restaurants, et cetera, and as an asset to the surrounding business areas and the area in general. The Planning and Zoning Rec, uh, Commission reviewed this item and held a public hearing on August 8th of 2016. There were no comments from the public. The Commission unanimously recommended approval and forwarded this item to you for your consideration. The council is being asked to consider if the request for the zoning map change to RSPAD is in conformance with the general plan 2025 and is appropriate with the limitations set forth as conditions of this approval. The request is consistent with land use goals of the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025. Staff supports this request and recommends that the council make a motion to approve zoning map change 15-004, subject to the following conditions. Approval by the Town Council of a final development plan in accordance with the Town Code Article 13-19, consistent with the preliminary development plan. That all development shall be in conformance with all Town Code requirements, including screening and lighting. The installation of public improvements and dedications as required by the town engineer. And the remittance to the town on a monthly basis of all monies collected as a result of the owners and operators of any apartment complex developed on the described real property, including any successors and assigns, applying a 2% surcharge against gross rents collected from the occupation and use of the units within any phase of the complex. Such remittance shall be made no later than the 15th day of the month to the town clerk, and shall be no later than 60 days after the issuance by the town of any certificate permitting occupancy of the phase of this complex. And Mayor, uh, I'm here for any questions, as well as Anissa Andrews from, um, the Fane Signature Group, if, uh...
Also, got any questions?
Mayor, I got a question.
Okay.
My question's for Ivan. Um, if we approve this, is there any chance that the original bondholders for the CFD for the event center could come back and sue us because it's not the original planned development? That's, that's...
Yeah, that, that's a good question, and back when we did the settlement in 2014, we were concerned about that. And so, in, in the settlement document, the, uh, uh, all of the bondholders agreed that they would not sue us, for, we anticipated that we'd be applying that, and they understood that that was going to strengthen the downtown, strengthen the event center, so they agreed with it.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Fane, do you have any comments? Oh, come on up, you got...
Yes, no comment.
It's good to see you, Brad.
It's good to be seen. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer any questions. We're really excited about the project and...
Okay. Public may have a question or comment. Anyone care to comment? This is a, really a nice project, and I have a feeling that people are going to not only approve it, but approve it very wholeheartedly. Very well done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Laura?
I am very excited about this project. Everything from the name to all the careful effort that's gone into this. It's very important to, to pay attention to the traffic which you've handled, and as far as I'm concerned, it's going to energize the entire area. It's something that's been lacking, and I, I am just so excited about this project because I think it's going to be a jewel in the crown right over there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments.
Thank you, Laura. Mary?
Well, Mayor, I know that we've been working and looking at this for at least two and a half years now. I can kind of make marks in, uh, the bus ride we took and things like that. And also, um, when it comes to the general plan of Prescott Valley, this is part of the vision, and, um, so we're following what the citizens had voted for in the general plan, and the roadmap that we're going toward, and it'll bring, uh, energy to the downtown area, and the walking will be nice, and, uh, and I look forward to it. And we do need more apartments because, uh, I have tried to help some people who have been looking for apartments, and I will tell you, the waiting list is quite a few months long. So, it's a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Fane.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, uh, now, come and use the microphone.
You have 20 minutes.
It won't, uh, go over the TV audience if you don't use the microphone, so we appreciate that. Thank you, Debbie.
I can speak for myself and for public. I've been blessed to be, um, a witness to part of this project, and, um, being so involved in the community that I have and talking to different people, I, I have to agree with all of that. The energy there will be absolutely fabulous, and I would personally even be enticed to have a smaller unit here in town where I could just be, um, right out my back door, have everything and anything that I need without having to rely on transportation. So, here, here, get my vote from the public. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fane.
Any other, uh, anyone else in the public care to comment?
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of questions. I just want, I, I remember attending the meeting with the Planning and Zoning that was, uh, I think a very, uh, comprehensive meeting, appreciate that, and just wanted to confirm that it really hadn't been any changes relative to the provisions we talked about in terms of how that, uh, would be developed. You know, I think there is a surcharge still to, I think, accommodate some of the retail loss that we may incur. Is there a developer now on the wings that, uh, will prompt, I guess, the final development plan to be filed in the near term or long term, or...
Yeah, we're, we're moving forward with it right now. We are, we are the developer of the project, the Fane Signature Group, so we're moving forward with that, and all the provisions that, uh, P&amp;Z recommended that came forward with it are all, all still in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Brad, we do appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Richard, any other comments? Carmen? Okay, if there is, uh, no further comment, I would declare the public hearing, uh, closed, and we'll go on to B, consideration of approving the reading of ordinance number 818 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage, ZMC 5-004. Marty?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the agenda page and the booklet are wrong. According to this part, 10B is that we're supposed to vote on the zoning map change.
Well, this is 10B.
Yeah, but that and that don't coincide.
It doesn't, I, I didn't catch that.
Uh, on here, uh, it says that 10B is the zoning map change, and here, it's the ordinance.
Right.
Which one's correct?
Well...
This is 10D. We're supposed to be voting on the zoning map change that we just had the public hearing about. And on this, it says that. Okay, I just want to be sure. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, I think we got that issue, uh, straightened out.
It's correct.
Good job, Marty. Thank you. Okay, is anyone care to make a motion, or...
I'll make a motion. Motion to read ordinance number 818 by title only on two separate occasions, in place the same on final passage, um, by verbal vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with the motion and the second, would you do the roll on that, Diane?
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Can abstain from voting?
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
And Mayor Skook?
Yes.
That approves?
Passes, okay. With that, I would ask, uh, Town Clerk to read the ordinance by title only for the first reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 818, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map to change the zoning classification of an approximately nine and 55 hundredths acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Florentine Road from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Service Planned Area Development Zoning, to 2RSPAD, which is Residential and Services Planned Area Development Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we'll move on to another public hearing. This is for zoning map change, ZMC 16-004, Crown Point Lofts. Carmen?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I did want to apologize to, um, the council and, uh, Mr. Fane. I do have the planned area development, um, that I didn't, uh, forward on, so that's currently on the screen, as well as the elevations. Everyone can see how attractive this, um, development is going to look. And then with that, I have a request... And then, with that, I have a request by Marketplace Partners, Charles Arnold, agent, for approval of a zoning map change, ZMC 16-004, to change the zoning of approximately 3.87 acres located in Track C of the Glassford Regional Marketplace, from C2PAD to RSPAD, Residential, Residential and Services Planned Area Development. This parcel was annexed into the town in 1990 and given a classification of RCU 70. Eighty-one point seven-three acres were rezoned to C2PAD. And Resolution 900 was adopted in 1999, approving a development agreement with Glassford Partners LLC, owners of the eighty-one acres, to develop a regional shopping center. A final development plan for the Glassford Regional Marketplace showing revised roadway access and designating the tracks into A, B, and C were approved in April of 2000. Final development plans have subsequently been approved for individual projects comprised of the Terrace's Apartment Complex, the Kia Dealership, Comfort Suites Hotel, and Full Swing Batting Cages. The subject property consists of almost, or 3.87 acres. And in addition, I have the preliminary development plan, which consists of a complex of eight apartment clusters with ninety-six total units, one hundred and seventy-four parking spaces, of which twelve are designated, handicapped, and a clubhouse. The proposed property fronts Crown Point Drive, a private road, and backs East Market Street, a public dedicated roadway. The site is located within the marketplace development near Glassford Hill, adjacent to the Crossroads Regional Shopping Center. The majority of Glassford Hill is state trust land managed by the Arizona State Land Department and was classified as suitable for conservation purposes under the Arizona Preserve Initiative. An additional one hundred and eighty-two acres of land adjacent to the Glassford Hill trust land and close in proximity to the subject project was dedicated to the town for open space and recreation and will be rezoned for permanent open space in the near future. Additionally, the town has recently completed a long-awaited trail known as the Summit Trail that climbs the nearby state trust land up the summit of Glassford Hill. The proposed use and proposed RSPAD zoning is appropriate at this location and is in conformance with the general plan 2025. The PDP 16002 will permit the development of the complex of eight clusters of apartments, ninety-six total units, and parking spaces and clubhouse on 3.87 acres. A neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant on April 4th of 2016, with all property owners within a thousand feet having been invited by first-class mail. There were two members of the public and one applicant in attendance. Questions were asked relating to the exterior appearance, access, and lighting. No negative comments were received. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the item and held a public hearing on August 8th of 2016. There were no comments from the public. The commission unanimously recommended approval and has forwarded the item for your consideration. The council is being asked to consider if the request for the zoning map change to RSPAD is in conformance with the general plan 2025 and is appropriate with the limitations set forth as conditions of approval. The request is consistent with the land use goals of the Prescott Valley general plan and therefore staff supports this request and recommends that the council make a motion to approve ZMC 16004, subject to the following conditions. Approval by the town council of a final development plan in accordance with town code Article 1319, consistent with the preliminary development plan. All development shall be in conformance with all town code requirements, including screening and lighting requirements of Article 1326 and 1326A. Installation of public improvements and dedications as required by the town engineer. And remittance to the town on a monthly basis of all monies collected as a result of the owners and/or operators of any apartment complex developed on the described real property, including successors and assigns. Applying a 2% surcharge against gross rents collected from occupation and the use of the units within any phase of the complex. Such remittance shall be made no later than the fifteenth day of the following month to the town clerk and shall begin no later than sixty days after the issuance by the town of any certificate permitting occupancy of any phase of the complex. And I also have elevation for you. I am available for questions, as well as Charles Arnold, the agent for the project, is here in attendance as well.
Questions?
Got a few questions. When we look at the elevations, are we assuming that these will be three-story buildings?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then, the pricing, I know our first project that we discussed is more of a higher-end luxury type, and I'm wondering, from the standpoint of this project, if it'll accommodate, you know, I'm looking at, I guess, once it's penciled out, what the rents would be.
I think Mr. Charles Arnold would probably be better suited to answer that question.
Okay.
Mr. Arnold, Marty, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have a question.
See you. Come on up, Charlie. You don't have to be bashful.
Go ahead. Answer the other one, and I'll hitch up with mine.
It's good to see you, Charlie. We haven't seen you for a long time.
And Mayor and Council, good to see you all as well. Thank you. Councilmember, thank you for the question. They are gonna be market-rate apartments, but you'll also notice in our name that it's the Crown Point Lofts. So, our design is a little bit larger footprint for the average unit, but you will be seeing those very competitive with the market in Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Chino as well.
Marty, you have a question?
Yeah. According to the map here, the apartments are gonna be going in between where Kia is and where Full Swing and the hotel is. I've been up there a few times, and I just can't picture that it going in that space. Also, as a secondary question, is Kia still gonna be expanding to add a Volkswagen dealership right there? And how will that affect the map and how, and the expansion and access to it?
At this time, I believe the Volkswagen dealership is still on hold.
The dealer owns the property. That project has been put on hold, but it's not, it's not going away.
And to orient you, the Volkswagen dealership would be south of the current Kia accessed via Marketplace Drive. So, south of that, it wouldn't be contiguous to, but south of the current dealership. One thing that was taken into consideration, and I think Mr. Arnold can attest, he went through a series of initial project reviews, trying to be sensitive not only to neighbors that have commercial users, but also to the living environment that they're creating. And they shifted buildings around to be able to take advantage of getting as far away from the car dealership as possible, and then also have a good circulation element through the project. Prior to that, it didn't seem to work well. And again, I would refer to Mr. Arnold. They did a lot of work in trying to readjust those configurations to where it was less impactive to the neighbors, but then also created a decent environment so they didn't have lights shining in their windows at night, as an example, when they were displaying the automobiles. So, I think that there was some sensitivity to that built environment. I don't believe that there's any conflict with the future dealership because it'll be south of this property.
And just in follow-up to that, we did go through an extensive, about five-month process with staff working through this. The final site plan that you see here today is the product of that discussion. Orienting the windows so that the views are looking away from the dealership because of the light concerns. One of the other things, when you look at the northern portion, or in this map, the right side of the site, there is gonna be some extensive grading that has to be done. There's also a berm that's required by the code that will be installed between the apartments and the adjacent apartments. Some landscaping will be going into that berm, and then also the covered parking will be on the dealership's side of the project. Crown Point Drive is a private street, and all of our primary ingress and egress is off of that, as well as the emergency access for the fire district.
But other questions, comments? Anyone from the public care to comment? Kirk, no comment? Okay. Anything else, Carmen? Richard? If not, if there's no more comment, then I would declare the public hearing closed. And we'll move on to D, which is consideration of approving the reading of ordinance number 819 by title only on two separate occasions, then placing the same on the final passage, ZMC 16-004. Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the reading of ordinance number 819 by title only on two separate occasions and place the same on final passage, ZMC 16-004.
I'll second that.
Okay, with the motion and a second, would you call the vote, Diane?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Abstain.
Councilmember Nye?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, with that, I would ask you, Diane, to read the ordinance by title only for the first reading, number 819.
Ordinance number 819. An ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map to change the zoning classification of an approximately three and eighty-seven hundredths acre parcel located in Track C of the Glassford Regional Marketplace between E, East Market Street, and the Crown Point Drive from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Services Planned Area Development Zoning, to RSPAD, Residential and Services Planned Area Development Zoning. And providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we'll go on to number E. Again, a public hearing. Zoning Code Amendments, Vacation Rentals, Lodging, ZOA 16-002. Carmen, you're back up.
Great, thank you. I was before you guys a few months ago, amending the code to place some performance standards relating to vacation rentals. And now, we're back to amend it again because the state has stepped in. And therefore, we need to take another look at this. With the help of the legal department, staff has made some adjustments, some amendments to the code relating to vacation rentals. We adopted ordinance number 809 on September 24th of 2015 to clarify the use and regulations associated with short-term residential uses. The governor signed into law SB 1315, which prohibits cities and towns from restricting the use or regulating short-term rentals based on their classification, use, or occupancy, but allows regulations relating to health and safety. This zoning code revision provides regulations for business licensing, parking, nuisance, adult uses, and requires a 24-hour emergency point of contact. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on August 8th of 2016. There were no public comments relating to this zoning ordinance amendment. The commission unanimously recommended approval and has forwarded this item for your consideration. Staff is requesting that the town council approve these amendments, ZOA 16-002, to the Prescott Valley Zoning Code, Chapter 13. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions, anyone? You have a choice?
No.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Anyone from the public? Carmen, I think we understand this one.
Great, well, thank you.
And then, you get a chance, tell the legislators, kind of stay out of our business, okay?
Okay, I'll make sure to send that message down to Fane.
Okay, if there's no more comment, then we would, I would declare the public hearing closed. And we move on to F. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1974, declaring the document amendments to Chapter 13, zoning to be a public record for adoption by reference. Anyone care to make a motion? It'd be the first item of the three.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution 1974, declaring the document amendments to Chapter 13 zoning to be public record for adoption by reference, ZOA 16-002.
I'll be glad to second that, Mr. Mayor.
You have the motion and a second. Would you call the roll, Diane?
Mayor Skook? Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
I'll abstain from that as well.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That's approved, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we're going to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just indulge me for just a minute. I have an announcement, and it kind of saddens me, but I'll let you know that Carmen has accepted a new position, well-deserved, with the town of Chino Valley. She's gonna be leaving us, has tenured her...
Say, Chino Valley?
Excuse me, Camp Verde, CC, whatever. But in any case, she's going there in a little over a month. She's been very generous in giving us over a month's notice, very well-deserved. I wanted to thank her because she's brought a lot of services to the town residents, most notably, the housing rehab program that she's administered during her time here. And she's done a very good job bringing housing improvements for people who are well-deserving of those. She's also done a yeoman's effort. I was very pleased to see that she had the bulk of agenda, of the agenda today, because that experience, I think, will serve her well in the town of Camp Verde. Knowing that community quite well, in my previous days with Yavapai County, she's gonna need all the help she can get. But I hope you share with me your best wishes on her success in her future endeavors.
Thank you. I'm sure we all do wish her the best. Carmen, congratulations. Okay, we're going to number G. Consideration of approving the reading of ordinance number 820 by title only on two separate occasions, then placing the same on final passage, ZOA 16-002. Anyone care to make a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the reading of ordinance number 820 by title only on two separate occasions and place the same on final passage, ZOA 16-002.
I'll second that.
Okay, with the motion and a second, would you call the roll, Diane?
Mayor Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Abstain.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Passes, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I would ask you to read ordinance number 820.
Ordinance number 820. An ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Vacation Rentals, Short-Term Rentals, and declared by Resolution Number 1974 to be a public record. Amending Articles 13-02, Definitions 13-06, Use Regulations, and 13-24, Off-Street Parking Requirements Minimum. In Chapter 13 zoning to conform with the changes in state law, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, now, we'll go on to comments from the public. Consideration and general discussion of unscheduled comments. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance, and if such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on future agenda. Karen, you got a comment?
Yes, my name is Karen Hunt. I'm from Prescott Valley. I want to make a comment about...
Get him with the microphone a little closer.
I want to make a comment about the election. If the person who gave the chief of police the advice to go for it and talking to the reporter, that person who gave that go-for-it also violated the election law. I believe that the chief of police panicked when he was led to believe the sales tax could be repealed. Every knowledgeable person... Every knowledgeable person knows a tax is, when it's in place, it cannot be repealed. Now that everybody incumbent won their reelection, they can talk about Mary Mallory wanting her bus transportation with the property tax, Prescott Valley property tax, Mary Laura Lee with her ninety thousand dollar statue, you know, so, and if, Mary, I've got the paper to prove that you said. Now, I, I know that when the chief of police had this interview, Kevin Trevini with the Prescott Valley Tribune, Kevin Trevini, Sergio Montez, and Charlotte Bradford had no chance in hell in winning the election. Do you remember, Mary, when California passed Proposition 13, because farmers, ranchers, and property owners got...
Okay, I'm sorry, Karen, this is to be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member individually.
Okay, you remember, well, when, okay, I apologize. Okay, in 1980s, California passed Proposition 13, because farmers, ranchers, and property owners got tired of having everything tacked on to the property tax. I was one of them who supported that, and it passed. Now, I remember with what is now learning that something else, what Mr. Marshall talked about, when I was seventeen years old, I lived in Wyandotte County, Kansas, my mother and father had a attorney, her, his name was Roy Cook, running for county attorney. The county treasurer at that time told the precinct committee people, if they did not vote for his person, they would not have a job tomorrow. I thought I got rid of this good old boy system, moving here, from, from Kansas to California, now to here. Also, when you talk about the Constitution, I give out the Citizens' Roll Book for free. Page, page four, no, page six, it talks about citizen, I mean, the jury's, jury rights, what you do when you, to a jury, law of the land. Now, isn't it interesting? On page eight, it talks about the Ten Commandments, but down on the bottom, it talks about the summary of the Ten Communist Manifesto. I know for a fact what it is, because I still have close relatives in Russia. One, abolishing of private property. Two, heavy progressive income tax. Three, abolish of all rights inherit, of inheritance. Four, confiscation of property of all immigrants and rebels. Five, central banks, what do we have? Central banks. Six, government control, communications, and transportation. What is happening now? Six. Seven, government ownership of factories and agriculture. What do we have? We, also, government control of labor. What is happening here? Corporate farming. What is happening? We got more corporate farmings than we do mom-and-pop farms. Ten, government control of education. What is happening now? Government has control of education.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else have any comment? Uh, yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Barney Barber, I live on Park on Ranch, you've seen my face here several times, and I've been, been here fourteen months, and I've lived in six communities, and by far, this is the best.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
And I was delighted to see that the four councilmen were reelected, because I enjoy living here, this is going to be the last place I live, and I'm delighted with the direction of the council, I just wanted to hear that.
We appreciate that, thank you. Debbie, do you have a comment?
Thank you, my name is Debbie Williams. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and our city staff. I'm here to congratulate our incumbents. It was a campaign season like when I don't, I've never experienced before, very sensitive time. I commend our incumbents for the work, the dedication, the loyalty, the work that they put in, well-deserved, and thank you. You really showed us what this town is all about. I want to commend the council for the work that they put in before they come to this bench. I can't even imagine in my world what you all have to endure, as far as paperwork, documentation, legal, seeking out information, doing your workshops, doing your homework, seeking from the community. You come here as professionals, and you give us your best and your vote, and that is to be commended. We have, we have cities and governments that are restless with each other, and nothing gets done, and I've never seen that here. The second part of my public comment is, I don't like taxes. I'm on a fixed income. The quality of life that I experience here is one that I have not had anywhere else. First, I have my safety here, I have good roads. What many people don't talk about, and I'd like to, is the air quality here. You can't get that anywhere else in this country, along with the safety and the roads. I have awesome outdoor recreational activities at my front door, I can look at it, it's amazing. I have friendly neighbors, I have a supportive community. Taxes will always be a part of my life, I'm willing to give up a new outfit to have the life I have here. I am blessed, and thank you, and I am an American, and I'm proud of what this community does and the support it's going to show the rest of the world. We will be out there for the rest of the world tomorrow, and I'm so blessed, and I just can't thank you enough, and our incumbents. And I will tell you, this year campaigning, I heard from our public safety people, and I commend our police department for going out into this community, coffee with the cops, night out, being available. I can walk into that department any day of the week and be seen and heard with respect, and I cannot thank them enough for what I have here. Thank you for your time, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Debbie, appreciate it. Kay, you have a comment? Come on up.
Mayor, Council, staff, and citizens. I'm Kay Giles, I live in Prescott Valley, and I want to express my support of Police Chief Gerald, the town council, and the town management. The income, the sales tax increase was a big issue in this election this year, I support that increase for two reasons. One is the police department. Because of the recession, the police department is understaffed. We are in population growth mode at this point, which would accentuate the problems that could occur, and in order for our police department to be able to provide a safe community, safety for themselves, deal with growth issues, and have good response times on their calls, we needed to have more officers, because they are so depleted because of the recession, and we needed them now. Because the council went ahead and set up the tax, at the time that they did, we could hire eleven new employees who are in training to become officers. If the council had not moved at this point and had waited for a vote of the public, it would have probably delayed this process at least another year, and then it takes a year to train policemen, we cannot wait two more years to have good police quotas numbers. And so we needed to move quickly now to get our numbers up to speed, so that we can have adequate protection. Secondly, I support this measure because of the streets. I understand that because of the recession, we are at least five years behind in street maintenance, and we can all see the damage that's occurring on our streets as we drive down them. Because the council moved and set up this sales tax when they did, this summer, major upgrades were made on a lot of the streets in our town. That kind of work can only be done in summer months. If they had waited for a public vote, that work would have been delayed at least another year, and every year that goes by, the deterioration gets worse, and the problems get bigger. We needed to start now. I am low-income, and I struggle to make ends meet, and any new increase in expenses hurts, but I believe so strongly that it's important that we have proper staffing for our police department, and we have properly maintained and upgraded roads, that I am willing to do my part by paying this tax. And I want to note, too, that the upgrades are not just more chip seal. I've heard the explanation of what they're doing, I've seen it on roads I drive by, they are shoring up the shoulders to support the roads better, they are widening the area that is paved, and they are putting on a whole new layer of pavement, not just chip seal. I am looking forward to when they get to my area, because right in front of my house is a huge area that that's the only solution for, filling potholes is not working. We have a great community, and it has been managed very well, and I believe that is shown, especially by how well we got through the recession compared to other communities around us and in Arizona. The election is over, the voters have shown very clearly who they trust to run their government, and I didn't plan to have to say this, so I'm going just by memory on the numbers, but if I remember right, all four winners were well above the majority, the majority line threshold, all four losers were well below, and the range between the winners and losers was anywhere from about four hundred votes to two or three thousand votes. I don't see that as stacking the deck. Also, I voted by mail, and I voted early, my ballot and other people I know, our ballots were submitted long before Chief Gerald ever made the comments in the newspaper, so they could not have been affected by his comments. The election is over, I believe it's time to set these issues aside and let the council and the management run our town, and we do our part by paying the taxes and contribute in work wherever we can, and all of us work together to continue to keep our town great. Thank you.
Thank you, it's people like you that make it all worthwhile. Any other comments, anybody?
May I make one more suggestion?
Okay, very big...
If the, Mr. Ivan Leglitter, who is our town attorney, give a course on the article of elections where, you know, if, if he, if he would have, if the chief of police was informed that he could, it was against the, the voter law, what he did, I don't think he would have done it, and I think Mr. Leglitter should have a gathering of everybody in the, working for the town, and explaining what the town, what the law is on election laws.
Thank you, Karen.
And by the way, that county treasurer in Wyandotte County that threatened the committee, precinct committee people, four months later, he was caught with his hands in the cookie jar, and he had to be forced to resign.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else?
No.
If there's no further comment, then we have one more serious item to cover, that's the item number twelve, which is known as adjournment, everybody hates that, but we do need a motion if you want to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, would you call the roll on that, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That's approved unanimously, Mayor.
Passes, thank you so much, thank you all for coming.